Hudson County View live on John Cut and I'm your host, the man of the hour, too sweet to be sour, the women's pet in the bed's regret, and what you see is what you get, and what you don't is better yet. Hudson County News. So first of all, let's talk about this corruption investigation by the U.S. Department of Justice, and specifically, they're looking into U.S. Senator Bob Menendez. We know some subpoenas went out last week, and we know one of the people that got subpoenaed was State Senator at North Bergen Mayor Nick Sacco. So obviously, we're going to talk about that, and what relevance this has to North Hudson. So also, speaking of North Hudson, Mayor Nick Sacco and his team were reelected by a big margin on Tuesday, so we're going to let you know how those results ended up. And similarly, in West New York, we saw a big win by Albeo Series at his slate, so we're going to talk about that. And also, in Jersey City, there's quite a few things going on. We saw the prelim introduction of the budget. We saw $25,000 going towards funding summer camps, and we saw summer pool fees for next year get approved. So we're going to talk about all that and a little more with our guest today, and that's Jersey City Ward Day Councilwoman Denise Ridley. So all that, and probably a little bit more after this word from our sponsors.
Stevens Jersey City Ford, certified parts and service located at Route 440 and Communipaw Ave is your number one source for Ford and Lincoln automotive needs. We use certified Ford Motocraft products to keep your Ford running in top shape. Motocraft parts are backed with the Ford warranty, which includes a two-year unlimited mileage guarantee. Our team will have the right Motocraft part to ensure the best performance from your Ford or Lincoln. You can order in person at the parts counter or online. Let us help keep your Ford or Lincoln in the best shape at Stevens Jersey City Ford.
Burns Brothers Memorials, Monuments and Markers, 787 Tonley Avenue, Jersey City, Hudson County's only monument maker, serving all faiths and cemeteries. Design studio and large inventory onsite. Cemetery inscriptions and custom orders welcome. Burns Brothers Memorials, Monuments and Markers, 787 Tonley Avenue, just south of Secaucus Road. Craftsmanship that will last for all eternity. Burns Brothers, Jersey City, Albert H. Hopper, North Arlington, visit us on the net.
Consumer Carpets, 3408 Kennedy Boulevard in the Jersey City Heights, your one-stop store for residential and commercial floor treatments. Carpeting, linoleum, tiles, laminates, hardwood floors, area rugs, remnants, all major brands, all in stock. Free estimates, same-day installation. Consumer Carpets, it's saving, selection, installation. Credit cards and debit cards accepted. Financing available. Consumer Carpets, priced to fit your budget, installation to fit your schedule. On the net at consumercarpets.com. Consumer Carpets, Jersey City, 201-792-2712.
Hudson County View live on John Cut, I'm your host, John Arhitas. And today, as I mentioned moments ago, I'm joined with Jersey City Ward Day Councilwoman Denise Ridley. Councilwoman, thanks for coming in.
Thanks for having me, John.
No problem. So let's talk about this measure that you and your colleagues approved unanimously last week, and that was Jersey City Initiatives. This is $25,000 gift that they're going to do for 20 years. So just tell us a little bit about this company and how you ended up at this place.
Okay, so similar to what the ordinance says, there is a company, they chose to put a sign in Ward A. When they come into different areas, they like to give back to the community, something that they've done in the past. They approached saying that they would like to give a gift. They would be able to do a reoccurring gift of $25,000 a year for the life of the sign, which would be 20 years as of now. And so the intent is to use that money for the area most impacted by the sign, or the area where they're going to be, which is Ward A, Greenville area. Ward A is now Greenville, Inverge, Lafayette, so all of Ward A. With that in mind, that is some cushion for the next 20 years, not a big cushion, but $25,000 a year can help to do some things in the ward that a lot of residents have been looking to do, similar to the participatory budgeting that the city rolled out with the $50,000, allowing the community members to decide what they wanted to do with it. A lot of people wanted extra cleanup, maybe some Christmas lights, ideas like that. That funding helps with that. But this year, I knew that we had a citywide crisis, which is recreation now charging a fee for the summer camp that wasn't charged in prior years. A lot of residents reached out about that, so I thought it would be a good idea this year to use that funding towards helping low-to-moderate-income families be able to afford to send their kids to camp. So that's what we're going to do with it this year.
So how many underprivileged families you think this will benefit per year?
I believe we can send 150 kids to this summer camp. The sessions are two weeks long. The fee is $150 for those who meet the low-to-moderate-income threshold. So I think we should be able to send at least 150 kids, which would be great.
Yeah, for sure. Now, some people have said they don't think that one ward council person should oversee this whole process, even if it's not during your tenure. What do you think of that?
You know, I don't make any apologies for that decision, because I feel like Ward A is the last ward in the city to see some of this new development. There are a lot of things that we need. There are a lot of residents in my ward who feels, feel like things have been lacking, and that we need a little extra assistance. I don't think that this funding should necessarily be geared towards maybe areas of the city who have seen a lot of more growth than other areas of the city. I think the intent was to cultivate a community that, one, needs it, and, two, that they're going to be present in, and that's the Ward A community. So I think that anything that I can do while I'm here in this seat to give residents in Ward A an advantage, and to, to give them a little extra help, or a little extra cushion, or a little extra help for the next person that takes a seat, I'm going to do those things. So that's the intent, and I don't see anything wrong with that. And the way that it's worded, was specifically worded that way because of situations like this. Like this year, that money is going to be used throughout the city, and it can be used throughout the city. There's no limits, saying you have to just use it for Ward A. But I think that that decision should be made by the Ward A representative.
Okay, thanks for that. So let's talk broader picture. As you know, this budget has a $57 billion deficit, and there's talk of tax increases through 2028. So we're talking about this budget process, of this spending plan, fiscal responsibility. I mean, what do you think about what the administration's put forth here?
You know, we're reviewing the budget. We have our, our budget sessions with each department set up, where we're going to dive a little deeper and find out what those needs are of each department. And I think if there are places where we see we can cut more, then we'll definitely try to cut more. It's a trying time, I think, not just for government in Jersey City, but for everyone. We see prices rising everywhere, and everybody has to reevaluate the way they do things. We lost some of the funding that we've had in the last couple of years, now that the pandemic is quote-unquote "over." So there are some cushions that we did have in place that are no longer in place, and we have to find a way to make up those funds. And of course, we don't want to continuously tax our residents. So wherever we can cut, we're definitely going to cut. And I think we have been making some of those changes. The council has been meeting with different departments on a quarterly basis to find out what they're doing, what they're spending money on, and we plan to continue to try to keep those lines of communication open. We know we passed the budget very late last year. We don't want that to happen this year. So we're doing our best to stay engaged and to make sure that we're more a part of the process.
All right, so let's go back for a second. Talking about affordability, obviously, in ordinance, it's gotten a lot of press coverage these days as the right to counsel.
Right.
So I know a bedbit's have been made, it probably still will be made before next week, but what do you think about this proposal, and, you know, where do you stand today?
I think I've expressed some of my views on it, some of the issues that I have with it. My issue is not representation for tenants. I believe that people, they do need representation, and, you know, any assistance that we can give our residents is always helpful. We know that we have a high tenant population. We have a lot of renters in the city, so of course, we want to protect them. I just want to make sure that in that process, we are also considering our small homeowners. So that is some things that I want to look at. I know a lot of our small, one, two-family, three-family property owners are also not going to court with attorneys. You know, bigger corporations, yes, they have access to attorneys. One thing in the ordinance is that tenants making $64,000 or under would be able to get this representation. I think that landlords that make $64,000 or under have the same issue with finding representation, and it should be equal. So those are some of my main issues with the ordinance. But like I say, yes, everybody needs representation. It's nothing against tenants or saying that they don't deserve representation. We just want to make sure that we're not hurting our property owners in the process, small property owners.
All right, very good. Don't go anywhere, Councilwoman. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be right back.
Good Friend Self-Storage in North Bergen, New Jersey is a fully climate-controlled facility equipped with state-of-the-art security, packing supplies, a refer-friend program, and multiple loading docks convenient for commercial use. Located just off of Route 3 at 4301 Tonley Avenue, Route 1 and 9. Call 201-867-2444, or visit us on the web today. Good Friend Self-Storage, let us be your good friend.
Panapinto Properties, Jersey City, shaping the workplace with state-of-the-art office spaces and addresses your company desires. Building residences that define your home environment, adjacent to all modes of transportation with onsite parking available. The right address, the right lease. Call 201-521-9000, or visit online at panapintodevelopment.com. Panapinto Properties, building Jersey City for everyone.
Not everyone celebrates the birth of a baby. You have options. Don't panic. New Jersey has safe havens for unwanted infants. Leave the baby with staff at any hospital ER, police or fire station, or rescue squad. Call the number on your screen for safe haven locations, or go to www njsafehaven.org. No shame, no blame, no names, Safe Haven.
Hudson County View live on John Cut, John Arhitas, and I'm still here with Jersey City Ward Day Councilwoman Denise Ridley. So Councilwoman, I know when you said this, I think it was like two caucuses ago, and you were talking about how landlords and tenants should be represented equally. You know, we saw some pushback from the New Jersey Democratic Socialists of America, who you know are vocal in getting this to the table. So they're basically saying landlords have been taken care of, you know, from day one here in this administration, and this ordinance really shouldn't be about them. So why do you see it another way?
Well, as a landlord, I can tell you, I don't know how we've been taken care of, but, so I would tend to disagree with that. I think that there needs to be more options on both sides, just like right to counsel. Yeah, that, that might be the answer, but also extending some of this funding for tenants to be able to pay their rent, right? Similar to what we were doing during COVID, I think is a good way, because if you don't have the money to pay your rent, you know, in a couple more weeks, couple more months, you might still be in that situation. So I think we need more programs like that additionally on the other end with the landlords. And again, I'm talking about small landlords, not big corporations. I think that we need, you know, some more assistance programs for smaller landlords, because regardless of what's going on with your situation with your tenant, you're still responsible for that home. You know, you still have to heat it, you still have to pay taxes. Those never stop for property owners. So there are a lot of expenses that property owners incur, and you might have some property owners that really want to do better with the certain things, but don't have the income to do it. So I think there just needs to be more options on both sides to assist people financially.
Okay, very good. So let's talk a little nitty-gritty politics, you know, my favorite. So now, 2025, we know the mayor, Stephen Philip, running for governor. It's still early, we're 25 or so months out, but what do you think about his chances, and what do you think about what he could bring to the state of New Jersey?
I think that he has a good chance. You know, the mayor, I think he's very innovative. He likes to try new things. I think that he's done a good job in the city. Of course, there are going to be things that residents may not agree with him on, or that I might not even agree with him on, right? But he's always willing to take that chance and try something new. I think there are a lot of good things that he has brought to the city, and I think that he can take that to the next level and bring those things to government. And I know sometimes people feel, when you're seeking another office, that maybe you're leaving the city behind, or leaving the city as a stepping stone. But I look at it just as any other job, right? You want to move up, and he's been here with us for a number of years. This is his third term, and now he's looking to expand on that and to go to the next level. And I think that this is a good opportunity for him to try, and I wish him the best of luck.
Okay, well, speaking of moving up, a lot of talk about 25 here in Jersey City.
Yes.
You know, we've heard about Solomon for mayor, O'Day for mayor, Waterman for mayor, of course, all speculative, but what are you thinking at this time?
I think that we'll see. I really don't have anything concrete. I think that all options are on the table for everyone, and we'll see who's the first to jump out there and put themselves out there. And then I think from that point on, a lot of decisions will be made. You know, if somebody puts themselves out there that people feel they can be amenable to, then maybe some of those people won't run, or maybe people will still run. But I think we have to see who's really serious at this point.
Okay, fair enough. Now, another thing that I almost forgot about last week's meeting was the summer pool fees for 2024, excluding children.
Yes.
Got approved, and it was a pretty definitive vote, eight one. So why did you think that this was the right move for the city at this time?
I think that initially going into it, I won't speak for everyone else, but I know my intent was to defeat the ordinance. After sitting there, having some conversation with the director, and having some amendments made by Councilwoman Prinsieri, Councilwoman Salay, with Councilwoman Prinsieri delaying this whole process till next year, Councilwoman Salay excluding children, which is our main focus, the kids. I think that made everyone feel a little more comfortable voting for it, with the exception of the, the one nay vote. That's what changed my mind, was pulling the kids out. And the way I look at it is, we still have a whole year to figure it out. So there can be amendments, there can be ways for us to find the additional funding where the entire thing is free, but we've decided to waive that fee for this year and not start till next year. So I think we have a responsibility, not only for the, the pools, but for the summer camp, to try to figure this out in the next year, of how we can get back to that point where these things are offered for free. And I think that's just the work that we have to put in.
So would you say, just because of like inflation, and just, you know, because of other reasons that costs have went up, it just was a point where it just could no longer be free? Was that basically where we're at?
Yeah, that was the basic explanation from the director. It's a lot to maintain these facilities. It's a lot to maintain the staff. Prices are rising. We have to increase pay for our employees. So it's a lot, it's a big budget to maintain these pools and these pool facilities, and to keep them up and running and make repairs. Everything is going up, and it's the same for cities. Just like we go in a supermarket and we notice that things are going up. I walk out with six things, and I've spent almost $100, right? Six small things.
Sure.
Everything is going up for everyone, and we have to adjust, and we have to figure out ways to adjust. I'd like to see the city focus more on getting more grants for things. I think we could probably really use a good grant writer, or maybe a whole grants department with all the different city departments we do. We have, some departments are better at finding grant money than others, and I think that if we kind of tap into that, we can fill a little bit of holes with some additional funding from outside sources without tapping our residents.
Got it. All right, Councilwoman, any closing thoughts today?
Oh, I just thank you for having me here, and, you know, I think it's a great show. I appreciate the invitation, and anytime I'm here to talk.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, thanks so much for tuning in. We're not done yet. We'll be right back.
Newport, the luxury waterfront community on the Hudson River offers a quality of life you deserve in one of our many high-rise towers. With amenities such as the onsite Newport path, light rail, Newport Town Square, three playgrounds, dog run, upscale restaurants, retail giants like Kohl's, JCPenney, Macy's, and Target. Morton Williams and Acme Supermarket are just outside your front door. A health and fitness center, skating rink, and medical facilities are also onsite. Enjoy the New York skyline from our waterfront and various parks. Manhattan is just one pass stop away, or a quick ride through the Holland Tunnel. Nursery and private elementary schools, all onsite. Twelve-screen movie theater at the Newport Center Mall. Looking to visit? Stay at the Westin or Marriott Hotel. For more information, visit us at newportnj.com. Make lasting memories to cherish forever. It's incredible. It's you, Newport. Live like you want.
This thing wraps. Oh, it is so quick. There's a lot of punch back into this Bronco Sport. It's got a ton of horsepower. I love it. All right, now we're getting hairy. Now we're getting this funny stuff.
Yeah.
I like how we can get over or around almost anything.
Yeah, I did hear that.
My super digger. It's gonna be a good day.
Growing up can be tough on kids. So much is going on in the world that can cause depression or anxiety. Unusual behavior for more than six months could mean they need help. Don't wait for real-time mental health support and counseling. Call New Jersey's Children's System of Care. CSOC offers free mental health supports, substance use treatment, and services for intellectual or developmental disabilities for all kids up to age 21. Call now, 1-877-652-7624.
Introducing the all-new Ford Maverick. A truck for people who do stuff, and people who make stuff. People like Gabrielle Union.
I make this look good, don't I?
Who haul whatever they want to wherever they want. Like wood, to build things made of wood with, and friends to get weird with. It's for long trips that the standard hybrid engine with a targeted EPA estimated city fuel economy rating of 40 miles per gallon helps with. That an eight-inch touchscreen connects with, and any trip that this interior makes more comfortable. But we'll let Gabrielle tell you all about it.
Or I could just tell them it's a Ford truck that starts at less than $20,000 MSRP.
Yep, that works too. The all-new Ford Maverick, built to defy expectations.
Bring 150 around front, please.
We designed the F-150 to be tough. And we delivered on towing and payload like you'd expect. We also made it smart, starting with an available hybrid powertrain. This engine also allows you to use your truck as a high-wattage generator. It's the kind of capability that a truck owner's really never had before.
The Ford Maverick is a smaller truck, but the available 2.0-liter EcoBoost engine has plenty of horsepower and torque, and allows you to tow all kinds of stuff. And if you need to take the Maverick out past city limits, there's select drive modes to take on different terrains, as well as the FX4 off-road package with all-wheel drive.
Hudson County View live on John Cut, John Arhitas. So let's talk a little bit about those election results from Tuesday. So we had those races, of course, in North Bergen and West New York. Now, North Bergen Mayor Nick Sacco took on Larry Weinstein for the third election cycle in a row. He beat him in 2015 and 2019, and those were pretty definitive wins. It was about 65-35, and then it was about 69-31. At this time, he ran up the score again. It ended up being about a 72-28 margin, and that's one of his biggest wins in probably a couple decades, if not ever. So when I had the chance to interview Sacco at his victory party at the Waterside Restaurant, he said, "I was hoping that the people of North Bergen would appreciate the government that they have under my leadership," and obviously, and they obviously did. "They came out, they voted, and we got about 72% of the vote, plus on the machines, and I'm really happy with it." So again, this wasn't really a tight one, you know, it was a very definitive win by Mayor Sacco and his Board of Commissioners slate, and that slate included Public Safety Commissioner Alan Pasqual, Parks and Public Property Commissioner Hugo Cabrera, Hudson County Democratic Organization Chair Anthony Veniri, and Board of Education trustee Claudia Rodriguez. Claudia is actually the first Latina commissioner in North Bergen history, so I had a chance to speak with her as well. She said, "I'm very proud. My family is very proud. The commissioners gave me a beautiful welcome. I'm going to make history, and I love it." So, you know, pretty straightforward in this one. Like I said, no real surprises, but the surprise actually came in the early morning hours of the next day, and that's when the Fed subpoenaed Sacco in relation to the Menendez corruption probe. Now, we knew that subpoenas went out the day after, that was Wednesday, and then on Thursday, I have the subsequent report that says the U.S. Attorney's Office for the Southern District of New York subpoenaed Sacco in the Menendez case. Now, we saw a statement from North Bergen spokesman Phil Swabinski, and he was clear that Mayor Sacco is not a target in this investigation, but he's actually someone that was asked to testify. Now, his specific words, "On Wednesday morning, Mayor Sacco was issued a subpoena seeking information and records regarding several different matters that he was informed of being sought in connection to an ongoing investigation that is not related to him. Mayor Sacco has been assured that he is not a target of the investigation and was approached only as a potential witness, and he intends to cooperate fully and provide any requested information as he would with any law enforcement inquiry. As this is an ongoing legal matter, Mayor Sacco will not be making any additional comment." And the U.S. District Attorney's Office for the Southern District of New York and Menendez's office both declined to comment. You guys that have been following this closely, NBC News reported last month that Menendez is under investigation in connection with the ISG Halal, over an exclusive contract with the government of Egypt to certify Halal exports worldwide, as well as that he's setting up a criminal defense fund as legal bills pile up. And we heard from the Menendez team last month to NBC, and they said Senator Menendez is confident that this official inquiry will be successfully closed, but as it is still unresolved, he will be opening a separate legal defense fund, so as not to drain any further campaign funds. Now, I mentioned that The Daily Beast reported that developer Fred Debees, who pleaded guilty to an insider load scheme just over a year ago, and who owns the Edgewater office that ISG Halal operates out of, is tied to the investigation. And subsequent reporting from The New York Times confirmed this, and they also mentioned that the subpoena is related to the Palisade Cliffs Protection Act. That was a bill that was sponsored by Sacco and State Senator Brian Stack, who's also the Union City Mayor. And basically, this is a bill that would have just limited the development along the cliffs in Hudson and Bergen counties. So it would have, it basically would have had a hike cap, and, you know, what this has to do with Fred Debees or Bob Menendez, I'm not exactly sure, but I guess we're going to find out in the subsequent days. So sticking with North Hudson, let's talk a little bit about what happened in West New York. So a lot of us were expecting a pretty tight race, and, you know, a lot of us expected Commissioner Cosmo Cirillo's West New York forward, and Albeo Series, simply the series team for West New York, to be engaged in a pretty tight contest, but that ended up not being what happened. The series team won pretty definitively. They won by a margin of about 61-39. So, look, they had all the institutional advantages. They had, you know, endorsement of Governor Phil Murphy, New Jersey State Democratic Committee Chair Leroy Jones, the HCDO. They also had support of the likes of the Middlesex County Democratic Organization who donated. And of course, it'd be remiss if I didn't mention that they had the support of State Senator Brian Stack, who was walking with Series for a good four months. So when it's all said and done, you know, Cirillo's team just couldn't overcome all those institutional advantages, and, and that's basically where we ended up. He ended up a sweep with Series. He held the job of mayor in West New York from 1995 to 2006. He then served eight terms in Congress and decided that he wasn't going to retire, he was going to run for mayor again. That ended up being a good decision as he won decisively. And his victory party said, "First of all, let me thank you for all your hard work. You were terrific day in and day out. I appreciate your effort, and we're going to move West New York forward with your help." You know what we did with this win? We solidified West New York and Weehawken for Brian Stack. And we'll, we'll throw in Weehawken with it, he joked. "Don't forget, Weehawken Mayor Richard Turner is Series' right-hand man for decades and was also in attendance, as was Hudson County Executive Candidate Craig Guy, and Bayou Mayor Jimmy Davis," among many others, I'm sure. So, you know, a bit of an anticlimactic finish for those of us that were expecting a dogfight, but sometimes the result's just exactly what you think it's going to be, and it's just, there's no surprises, and that's what we had here, you know, with the Series team winning in definitive fashion. So with that, we're going to take a break. We'll be right back.
Stevens Jersey City Ford, certified parts and service located at Route 440 and Communipaw Ave is your number one source for Ford and Lincoln automotive needs. We use certified Ford Motocraft products to keep your Ford running in top shape. Motocraft parts are backed with the Ford warranty, which includes a two-year unlimited mileage guarantee. Our team will have the right Motocraft part to ensure the best performance from your Ford or Lincoln. You can order in person at the parts counter or online. Let us help keep your Ford or Lincoln in the best shape at Stevens Jersey City Ford.
Burns Brothers Memorials, Monuments and Markers, 787 Tonley Avenue, Jersey City, Hudson County's only monument maker, serving all faiths and cemeteries. Design studio and large inventory onsite. Cemetery inscriptions and custom orders welcome. Burns Brothers Memorials, Monuments and Markers, 787 Tonley Avenue, just south of Secaucus Road. Craftsmanship that will last for all eternity. Burns Brothers, Jersey City, Albert H. Hopper, North Arlington, visit us on the net.
Consumer Carpets, 3408 Kennedy Boulevard in the Jersey City Heights, your one-stop store for residential and commercial floor treatments. Carpeting, linoleum, tiles, laminates, hardwood floors, area rugs, remnants, all major brands, all in stock. Free estimates, same-day installation. Consumer Carpets, it's saving, selection, installation. Credit cards and debit cards accepted. Financing available. Consumer Carpets, priced to fit your budget, installation to fit your schedule. On the net at consumercarpets.com. Consumer Carpets, Jersey City, 201-792-2712.
Good Friend Self-Storage in North Bergen, New Jersey is a fully climate-controlled facility equipped with state-of-the-art security, packing supplies, a refer-friend program, and multiple loading docks convenient for commercial use. Located
Located just off of Route 3 at 4301 Tonley Avenue, Route 1 and 9, call 201-867-2444, or visit us on the web today. Good Friends Self-Storage, let us be your good friend.
Hudson County View, live on Cut, John Arhitas. Now, let's talk a little bit of mile-square city politics. There's a lot going on there. So on Friday, we saw Hoboken Second Ward Councilwoman Tiffany Fisher announced that she was going to be seeking reelection. She did so in an email blast, and we actually see now that her opponent's going to be Marla Decker. Now, when, when we look at that, we notice that the mayor, that's Ravi Bala, and the council president, Emily Jabour, has already come out in support, so it's no secret that they weren't going to be supporting Fisher. Obviously, Decker is somebody that perhaps your average voter might not know, but she's somebody who was active during the pandemic, and, you know, she's not Tiffany Fisher, and we know the relationship between the mayor and his allies and Fisher, and it's not particularly strong one. But I'm actually going to come back to that. I did want to mention that Hoboken Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Christine Johnson, has referred to herself as Dr. Johnson for about 14 years. The first instance goes back to 2009, and we saw through public records, after an extensive look, that she didn't receive her doctorate until August 2022, according to public records. So up until that point, documents and publications such as annual financial reports, minutes of school board meetings, and yearbooks routinely referred to her as Dr. Johnson, same way she would sign letters to parents and what her name-plated school board meeting said. So last August, Johnson received a doctor of letters in historical studies from Drew University, earned after submitting a dissertation on August 19th on the failure of a 2022 state law that aimed to add more Black perspectives to public school social studies classes. When I reached out to her for comment, this is what she sent back in a statement. "I had completed all of the required coursework, joy of scholarly writing and dissertation courses for the degree years ago. Due to unforeseen personal circumstances, I did have to maintain my matriculation and update my work for much longer than I had ever hoped. This is now behind me and has had slash has no bearing. My credentials are superintendent to the Hoboken Public Schools." Now, there's a lot more examples of her being referred to doctor in Boeotan and Hoboken, but the school board has said unequivocally that they still support her, and this is all much ado about nothing. Now, back to Marla Decker. She said, "I love this community and want to see it thrive. As a city council person, I will be a bridge builder and problem solver forging solutions, not creating counterproductive divisions and engaging in political grandstanding." So this is going to be interesting. You know, she's a former president of the Hudson Tea condo association, the treasurer of the Hoboken Democratic Committee, and a volunteer of the Hoboken Public Education Foundation, and she's also a lawyer by trade. So this will be an interesting matchup to watch. I think probably one of the best matchups in November. Now, on a final note, the Hoboken City Council will vote out an $85,000 settlement for a vendor who allegedly received a two-year deal with a former director, that's former Hoboken Health and Urban Services Director Leo Pellegrini, who was accused of doing so without approval from the administration or city council. We're not going to be able to finish that one, so we're going to tell you to go on hudsoncountyview.com. Thanks, ladies and gentlemen. We'll see you next week.
Panapinto Properties, Jersey
Thanks for watching Hudson Media Group. Follow us on social media, on Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook.